Okay, we'll officially call the Select Board meeting of Monday, July 10th, 2023 to order. I have Aaron Underhill, our clerk now, Ellen Rosenfeld, our vice chair, and myself, Craig Schultz, at the meeting tonight. We have a pretty big agenda, so we'll just get started with the first item. I have an announcement to make. There is a, the Rec Department has put together the summer, the summer concert series again. This will run every Wednesday night, it looks like it is. Starting at 6:30 PM, it'll be August 2nd through August 30th, and there are five acts performing over that time, so five nights. This is Wednesday in August, starting at 6:30 PM. I'm sure there'll be more information up around it everywhere, but it should be a good time, and hopefully we have some good turnout for that. It's been fun in the past. All right. Next item, any other announcements that you guys might have?
Nope.
All right. Appointments. We have a bunch of appointments.
We do.
Would you like to start with those?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, in your packet is a memo from Chris Fogarty, our Recreation Director, requesting that the board ratify my appointment of a number of seasonal employees for the Get Out and Play Program. This program will run from July 17th to August 11th. And there are a number of folks that, that'll be part of this. Meredith Young, Erin LeBlanc, Carolyn O'Shaughnessy, Meredith Gatz, Kevin Sullivan, Delia LeBlanc, Courtney O'Shaughnessy, Lily Avakian, Jack Borst, Nora Skanel, Tommy O'Shaughnessy, Maddie Adams, Danny Pasquantonio, and Nora Malloy. So with that, I'm going to request that the board ratify my appointment of those individuals for that Get Out and Play Program as part of the Recreation Department.
Okay, we ready?
Yes.
I move that the board vote to ratify the town administrator's seasonal appointments to the Rec Department Get Out and Play Program as follows. Meredith Young, Erin LeBlanc, Caroline O'Shaughnessy, Meredith Gatz, Kevin Sullivan, Delia LeBlanc, Courtney O'Shaughnessy, Lily Avakian, Jack Borst, Nora Skanel, Tommy O'Shaughnessy. We have a lot of O'Shaughnessys in here.
Yeah.
We have three O'Shaughnessys in here.
They happen to be related.
They happen to be, I hope they're related. Maddie Adams, Danny Pasquantonio, and Nora Malloy.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to ratify the town administrator's appointments. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll take all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. And the next appointment, Mr. Chairman, is of a temporary firefighter, and your packet is a memo from Chief Barrett. As the chief notes, the Fire Department currently has three firefighters that are out injured. They have been filling those shifts with overtime and using on-call members in an attempt to control the overtime budget. We do have a Mass Maritime intern named Andrew O'Reilly, who has graduated and is available to fill one of those positions as a temporary fill until the injured firefighter can return. Andrew's been a great addition to the Call Department and has been filling in shifts when available. He has enrolled in paramedic school and is set to test in about 18 months. He's requesting that I appoint him as a temporary full-time firefighter effective immediately. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I am requesting that the board vote to ratify my appointment of Andrew O'Reilly as a temporary firefighter with the Millis Fire Department.
So I move that the board vote to ratify the town administrator's appointment of Andrew O'Reilly to the position of temporary full-time firefighter effective immediately.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just a question. Does, if he's already in on-call, he doesn't need to get a query or physical?
I believe he's already had his query and physical.
Correct. Okay.
All right. All in favor of ratifying the town administrator's appointment? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Pass unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, I put forward a memo to you outlining the need for an interim COA Director. Our outreach coordinator, Deborah Sands, did that for a period of time until the beginning of last week, and that was covering for Patty Kao's retirement, until we have a new COA Director beginning with us. In order to cover as an interim COA Director, I'm asking that the board authorize or approve my appointment of Patty Kao as a temporary or acting COA Director until such time as the permanent COA Director begins her employment with the town.
Okay. I make a motion that the board vote to ratify the town administrator's appointment of Patty Kao as the interim COA Director effective July 3rd.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to ratify the town administrator's appointment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And now, what I think is the most exciting appointment of the evening, as the board is aware, Patty Kao retired earlier this spring. After many years of dedicated service to the town, we thank her for that. She retired from the position of COA Director. We soon thereafter initiated a search process to find her successor. We did widely advertise for this position. We did receive over 20 applications. The Assistant Town Administrator and I enlisted the assistance of members of the Select Board and the Council on Aging as part of that process to narrow down the list of applicants, and we conducted two full rounds of interviews with the finalists. We were fortunate to have several highly qualified candidates apply for the position, and at the conclusion of the process, after polling, all those involved with the search, we did have strong, we did, the majority of those that participated strongly recommended the appointment of Anne Marie Gagnon, who is here with us this evening, as the next COA Director for the town of Millis. Anne Marie has extensive experience as a COA Director, as well as experience working with seniors in a wide array of settings. I strongly believe that the combination of experience and temperament that she possesses will make her extremely successful in this very important role for the town, and I am requesting that the Select Board ratify my appointment of Anne Marie Gagnon to the position of COA Director for the town of Millis to be effective on August 1st.
So I make a motion that the board vote to ratify the town administrator's appointment of Anne Marie Gagnon to the position of COA Director effective August 1st, contingent upon a successful physical inquiry check.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this? Would somebody from the Council on Aging like to come up?
Sure.
Yes.
Show us your new hip. There you go.
I'm packing. I'm Meredith Sands of her, I'm the interim chair, excuse me, of the Council on Aging Board. And I just want to say that it's been a long time coming, and we're thrilled to have Anne Marie right here. We're very excited, and we think that she's going to be able to take us far, and we're going to be able to work with her easily, and I just wanted to say welcome. And we look forward to your beginning on August 1st. Thank you.
And Anne Marie, would you like to, anybody else from the Council on Aging Board first, or? No? Okay.
Good evening. I'm Anne Marie Gagnon, and I thank you so much for this opportunity to serve the residents of Millis. The time I spent with Mr. Kozinski, Ms. Burri de Marzo, the members of the Select Board and members of the Council on Aging Board in the last few weeks has really opened my eyes to where the Council on Aging has been, where it is now, where you're looking to take it to the next level, and I'm really looking forward to bringing my skills and my experience to meet those expectations. Thank you for this opportunity. I've been in elder services in a variety of different capacities, leading the Watertown Council on Aging efforts, leading the efforts of the Lifelong Learning Program at Regis College, working in a variety of different aging service access points, working on healthy aging projects, and community planning and development, fund development, and I'm just very, very pleased that now I'll be able to share all those experiences with you. And I look forward to working with the staff, the additional board members, and different town members who I haven't met yet, other department heads, to, you know, work together in partnership to have some really good new experiences and success. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now it's time, oh, another.
I think as a member of the--
Can you use a microphone, please?
Anne Marie.
While she's walking up, I just wanted to add, Anne Marie's enthusiasm for this position is going to be infectious. She's going to be an excellent addition. We were thrilled to have you.
Yes.
Yeah.
My question to you was--
Into the microphone, please.
You have to address the-- I'm hoping that you will actually--
What's her name?
I'm sorry, there's two things. You have to identify yourself and speak into the microphone.
Okay. I am legally known as Ethel Christman, but everybody calls me Christie, so. So my question was, would you be willing to interact with some of the activities that the seniors take place every day? We'd like to that very much, if you could do that.
Absolutely.
So you can actually meet more of us and see how engaged we are in a lot of multiple activities.
Absolutely, if I can address that. No, I--
Thank you for that comment. I, when I, absolutely, without a doubt. When I, in my position in Watertown, for instance, I also made it a priority for my staff to get away from their desks, get away from the work for a minute, be with the people, enjoy the part of the day. You know, what we really want people to do is leave the Council on Aging, knowing that they've had a good opportunity with us, that they've received information that they needed, whether they've had a good time, and we've been able to provide them with a positive experience. So absolutely. I'm happy to be the one who greets people, walks in the door, talks to people, sits down, and the only thing I don't do is play bridge, but I'm sure I will learn. But like I said, my passion is service, in service to older adults, and I look forward to meeting all of you and walking that journey together. So thank you.
Another question I have is, can, will you be transparent with your plans for the future of the center and programs and so on?
Certainly.
The question was, would I be transparent with plans? Absolutely. I mean, my role is basically to facilitate what the community wants and needs. My role is to work with the administration and to help to facilitate those conversations and make sure that the seniors and caregivers and family members in town, that we all share in that, in that process. And, you know, I am, I am just here to, you know, lead and support in cooperation with my fellow department heads and the town administration and be that conduit for also what, you know, the residents would desire. So thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. We had a motion on the table. We had some comment and discussion.
Did we?
Yeah, we did. We never voted it.
You did it.
You made the motion. It was seconded. So the motion to ratify the appointment has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously.
Very exciting.
Yeah, welcome.
Very exciting.
Just one more thing, and we're all very excited for Anne Marie to start with us, beginning of August. I just want to take this opportunity also to thank those that took part in the process. I did ask for a lot of feedback from a lot of folks, and for those that took time and worked with us, I greatly appreciate it. I just wanted to add.
Good. Thank you. Looking forward to seeing you when you start.
Great. Thank you so much.
Okay.
All right. We have one more appointment, it looks like.
Yes.
Should be two.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is an email from Rich Nichols, the Chair of the School Building Committee, asking, requesting that the board appoint Mark Conroy to the School Building Committee to replace Steve Catalano, who recently resigned from the school committee and the School Building Committee.
Okay, so I make a motion that the board vote to appoint Mark Conroy as a member of the School Building Committee, replacing Steve Catalano, who has resigned.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to put Mark Conroy on the School Building Committee in place of Steve Catalano. This is a school committee member filling a school committee seat, so this makes perfect sense. Any comments or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to know, this is a, this is not a one-year appointment, this is an appointment until completion of the project.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously.
Thank you.
And we are dead on time.
We're up to the hearing, right on time.
One minute. All right. It's bowed well.
We have to have a payroll of history.
Unfortunately, that individual has declined the position, and we just found that out early today. It's unfortunate, and we're going to continue to work on that.
All right. And so I'll make a motion to open, we need to open the hearing, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to open the water sewer stormwater rate hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to open the water, was that a motion on here?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. You can take it whenever you want. It's all right. Step all over.
I figured this one didn't, I thought we'd get into the motions. All right.
Stormwater.
Yeah.
Yeah, no kidding.
All right. So it's been moved and seconded. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. This is effective.
Stand up first.
All right. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of opening the hearing?
Aye.
Ellen, I'll let you have one from here. I didn't think that one was on the list. Or if I feel it's time to close it, I'll just, do we have new copies of that, or did you?
I think you have the updated.
I know, I, I have it on here someplace.
Oh, yes, I do. Put it in my--
Yeah.
Right here. Actually, right here.
Oh, good.
You're going to call them. Actually, if you want to. Thank you. Not color, but--
No, I think we got a whole list right here of the updates.
Do you need this back?
Same ones. Okay. So we killed a bunch of trees for this.
Yeah, why not?
Okay.
Anybody else interested in the audience?
Can you email me this PDF, the updated one, when it's time? I just like to keep PDF versions.
Sure.
These things tend to--
You have it.
Oh, this did come out. Okay.
This is the one that I sent you. It's exactly the same.
Okay.
I don't know, but I can send it again.
I didn't know if it was different. No, you don't need to send it again. If you've sent it, I'll find it.
Put it out here.
Why do you say updated? Did you get one of those?
I don't know.
You got one, you got one last week, and we had a meeting this morning, and it was updated.
Oh, okay. So it was updated?
Yes.
That's why I keep saying update.
So, good evening. I'm Jim McKay, Director of Public Works, and with me tonight is Michael Schrader. He's, Mike's been working with us for the past five, six years, helping, assisting us setting our water and sewer rates. So let's start off with the good news, and I still think you should take a vote on, even though there's no increase, we're going to leave the stormwater rates the same as they have been for the past six years. We haven't gone up in stormwater rates. I can report that, you know, unofficially, that, you know, the budget was returned $127,000. It hasn't been certified yet, so we can't use that amount yet to add back into anything until Canada certifies it. So next, we'll get into the water and sewer rates. We had much discussion. I think you received something over the, I think it was Friday, you received something that showed something that's a little different than what happened today. Town Administrator, the Assistant Town Administrator, myself, the treasure collector, Didry, and Dave Romaci all met with Michael earlier today, and we had much discussions, and I think what has to hap, whatever, has to understand, you know, it's still a business, and prices go up, chemical prices go up, labor rates go up, and just to get the water from pumped out of the ground to the home, it goes up every single year. And this year, as much as the, I'll be upfront, that the new PFAS plant building that we'll talk about, you know, when Kirsten comes up, those rates are, it's only the shot term borrowing for that of $160,000, but that was added to the rates, this rate hearing. The crux of the 3.5 million of that, that has to be borrowed, that probably will not go into effect until FY '25. So that's not in these rates. And again, I--
Just a question on that, Jim?
Yeah.
When that goes into effect, that'll be a capital charge, not a usage charge?
No, I think it's a usage.
Okay.
That'll be towards usage.
Okay.
And that's something that we talked about this morning, and I think it's a topic we need to talk about moving forward, and we're doing a little research on--
Okay.
--the genesis of that capital charge and looking at how that's used or not used going forward.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I was just curious.
Yep. So in, again, I'd like to remind the board, in, I think it was 2021 and '22, there were no, there was no increases in water rates whatsoever. Last year was the first year that we had a 5% increase in water rates. The sewer was a little different. The rates went up--
3.5%.
3.5%. And then last year, it went up a little bit more than that, but it was 5%.
Well, last year was 3.5%.
Okay. 3.5 in this year. Michael will explain the 5% increase. So I will turn it over to him for now, and then, you know, the town administrator and myself will be available for any questions when Michael's done.
Hi, nice to see you again. As Mr. McKay says, every year we look at this, it's, there's a number of things in play, looking at, you know, future projects, what we think future expenses are going to look like, what level of turnbacks or unexpended budget they realized in this year, and he was mentioned a couple times in discussion. It was a very good discussion, a very good, very engaged discussion, looking at what do we need. And I, you know, I have to say that I think Millis does a good job of being pretty conservative. They, you know, they, they run it fairly close and look at only making increases when we think we need to. So the biggest difference that, from the first version to the second version is we basically reduced the capital charge. Instead of, last year it went up 66%, and this year it went down 15%, which, I'll tell you, is one, one result of, if you're following a number very closely, so because the town has been diligent in working on and upgrading its infrastructure, you have debt falling off because it was older. So as one, in '22, projecting into '23, debt went up, so we had to increase that fee. And then, and looking at '24, some of that debt comes off, so we decrease it. What Mr. Kozinski was referring to is just looking at whether that is an equitable way to distribute that cost, and my own personal preference would be to see that phase out and just have it all included in the rates, because there's a better way of making them equitable to people versus just a--
Right. Capital charges, the way we've been doing them, aren't contingent on usage, right? They're just a straight divided by the number of users.
Correct. Yes, yes, which is, you know, part of our rigorous discussion is, everything in this is, comes back to equity, you know, cost causation and apportion and cost proportion to people's use of the utility. So per capita or per account is, is a difficult way to do that, so. But the plus side is, because of that, we were able to raise the rate for water enough to cover projected expenses, maintain a good balance and retained earnings, and, boy, I should lead with this, and then the, on the last page, the actual cost goes down for the residential user. So it's, you know, even though we're coming in saying, you know, it's a 10% increase, because of the reduction in capital, that typical family that I use for a--
Yeah.
For the cost actually goes down, you know, not much, but it goes down. So that really, I guess the other thing just to mention is, the rates cover the operating expenses, and once you're done with that, there's three items that are being shared, or actually, two of them are being shared with sewer, which is the dump truck and a trailer, and then there's a element for the PFAS design, and another one for a chlorine residual analyzer, and then that is offset, you, you say, you guys work hard, because that's offset by some savings or some closing out of smaller debt items that Carol had. I'm not exactly sure what she did, but she went through and was able to reduce some of those other costs. So of the 333,000 of capital, 155 is coming back from, we're showing other funding sources, but that's from either refinanced debt or for other reasons not, not needed on those articles. So I don't really have the details on that, but I know that that's, that's a good thing, and it's a nice way to, nice way to move the money. Is that good on, on water?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. And I guess too, when we look at it, it's, I don't want to be the person to come and say it is what it is, but it's, it's not discretionary spending, and they look, we sweat the numbers, I think is a fair way to say it, so. Similar to, with water, wastewater, it doesn't have the capital charge, so it's just rate and non-rate revenue, and looking at, same thing, the budget, the budget's almost the same. Again, there's the same three items, actually four items, for sewer, $167,000, and then the other funding sources wasn't quite as lucrative, it was like $13,000, so that kind of comes back. So what we looked at for that was a 5% increase, which is, you know, I don't want to say cost of living, but, you know, it, the, what Mr. McKay was saying about cost increases, you hear some scary stuff about chemical vendors not wanting to give you a price beyond 10 days, and, you know, it's, I think we're stabilizing a little bit now, but it's still a little, a little tricky. So if we look at that last page again, for, for sewer, we see that the, the cost for that family would go up by $36.81 over the year, which is offset by the 10 bucks if you're on both. And we do, by the way, use the residential impacts, I like to think of it as like a serving size for like an actual family would experience. 60 gallons a day is a fair amount of water, it's a reasonable amount, and three people is sort of an average household size, so that's it.
Just a question on the sewer, says rate and non-rate revenue. What's the difference?
Right. So non-rate revenue is everything that doesn't come from the direct payment of water bills, so it's connection fees, it's penalties.
There we go.
No donations, but--
Yeah.
You can hold, so.
So it's all the tie-in fees, basically?
Yeah. Mostly, yeah. Yeah, every town's a little different, some of the interest from bank accounts and whatnot. But again, we look at the, that non, those tie-in fees, what do you think? It was this much this year, are you comfortable guessing, you know, because that, if it doesn't come, so we're usually a little conservative, so that if, you know, something doesn't happen, it's still got enough money to--
Yeah.
--keep the water and sewer going in the right directions.
Yeah, and it's getting to the point where we will start to need to estimate some fall off on that, because we built, when we had all the other stuff coming in, we had larger tie-in fees, so I think that makes sense.
Correct.
All right.
So the only thing I can add to that is, you know, Carol can explain, I mean, you've heard it through her process of how we found out, how that money was all obtained, to pay for all the capital items through the budget process, I don't, if anybody has any questions on that, but I think we all remember that.
Yeah.
Jen, if Jen's here, if you have any questions for Jen, go through the budget process. She worked with us to get to these rates. And Mike's here, if you have any questions, I mean, I--
The only tricky thing is, if I may, is how to make the motion, so the rates, or actual rates are shown for FY '24 on page three, and it's a 10% increase in water usage rates and a 15%, or you could just say the number, or you could just refer to the rates, you know, as shown.
I recommend to the board that they approve the rates as presented by, by you.
Okay, I don't want to get over my skis here, but it's, it's, you know, awkward if it's, say, 10%, and it's not across, so.
That way we have the documents on which they actually approved, and we can work right off of those.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments from the public?
This falls in line with, we're doing the, starting the readings tomorrow, and we really can't, there's a 14-day rescission period that somebody can appeal it, so our council will post this in the paper, but we, this is the quickest we've had it done really can't, there's a 14-day rescission period that somebody can appeal it, so our council will post this in the paper. But we, this is the quickest we've had it done in years, and it helps Jen and the readers to get the bills out on a timely basis.
Okay.
And the documents we're talking about are actually on the select boards page, under the agenda for tonight. So there's the agenda and then there's a few other items that were added, this is one of the documents, so if anyone's looking for it, they are as well.
All right. So we'll take a motion to close the hearing.
I moved it, oh, I moved that the board vote to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, pass unanimously. Let you have that one there.
I moved that the board approve, am I ready for this one?
Yeah.
I moved that the board approve the new water and sewer rates as recommended by Mr. Schrader of Ty &amp; Bond and to leave the stormwater rates unchanged.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the rates as written and leave the stormwater rates unchanged. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. We're going to take an item slightly out of order. Carol, you're up next.
We promised this will be very brief.
Well, it's all up to you, Carol. I, I'm here all night.
The brief is better, we love it.
She'll be brief, she can't guarantee the rest.
Carol Johnston, Finance Director. So I have the year-end transfers, I think it's part of your packet. If you don't have a copy, I do have a copy here.
So just, yeah, so very, very briefly, Mr. Chairman, I did put a memo in your packet in accordance with Mass. General Arch. Chapter 44, Section 33B, Subsection B. At conclusion of any fiscal year between May 1st and July 15th, the Select Board with the concurrence of the Finance Committee may transfer any amount appropriated within the general budget to any other appropriation. This is done on an annual basis to properly balance the various budgetary accounts prior to the final closeout of the fiscal year. The Finance Department, you have the full list of transfers, and the Finance Committee is scheduled to meet this Wednesday, July 12th, to vote upon these transfers after the board votes on it here tonight. So there is the breakdown of the transfers, and I guess I would defer to the Finance Director for any description of those transfers.
So on the second page of, it gives a breakdown, we really don't have to do many movements of the, in order to balance this year. So if you want to just look at the second page, so the source that we're going to use is from the Reserve Fund, 28,573. We're also going to use from IT Consulting Services, 15,000, and from IT Software Maintenance, $11,227. Those sources are going to fund the deficits that we have in the general insurance of $6,500. The insurance rates came in higher than anticipated. Finance Committee printing for $4,200, the printing expenses are obviously higher. Medicare funding for 15,000, that covers the 1.45% rate against all payrolls. So it's a little bit higher than we had estimated. Our health insurance coverage was, was above budget by 15,000, and the short-term interest is $1,100 higher than what we had expected. The CS Charter School is, that's from the, the state, those charges that we got from the Cherry Sheet. So there was an increase in $13,000 for the Charter School assessment this year for the Cherry Sheet. So in total, we'll be transferring $54,800. There were no deficits in snow and ice this year, we had actually a little bit of a surplus. And that's what we have for the general fund.
All right.
Global warming.
It was lovely in the winter, it stinks now.
Exactly. So the top sheet is just a consolidation of the actual detail that I gave you in the behind there. Do you have any questions on those?
No, I remember back before we were allowed to do these transfers, the budgets had, I mean, years and years and years ago, the budgets had to be significantly higher because you couldn't take from a department that was ahead to put it into a department that was those behind. So you had to give every budget to a conservative, safe number that you knew you weren't going to exceed. So this is so much better.
Yeah.
And this has been this way for many, many years. So it's not that we misbudgeted by $54,800 by, in some of these lines is, you know, but it's, it's that we didn't have to budget everything to the worst-case scenario.
Right, exactly.
So it makes sense.
It's a balancing, we're not in deficit at all, it's just a balance between the different segments.
Yeah, it's what any business would do if you're running a normal business.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
All right. What about the second page?
On this...
The third page, right?
The third page, the only one of the enterprises that we had to do balancing on is the Water Department. So there was a surplus in the Water Special Projects for $37,600, and that's to offset in the salary, water license fees of $37,600.
So that's all the transfers, right?
Those are all the transfers.
All right. And we approve it and then the Finance Committee has to approve it on Wednesday night.
Wednesday.
So this all has to be completed by July 15th.
Right, we have to be closed by July 15th.
All right. There's a motion on this someplace.
I don't see a motion. Is there a motion?
Yes, page two.
Page two, we took them out of order.
Yes.
Yeah.
Lord.
Item 147.
Okay. I moved that the board in accordance with Mass. General Arch. Chapter 44, Section 33B, SubB, vote to approve the interdepartmental transfers as presented in the agenda packet.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the transfers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Did you want to sign now, or do you want to...
We want to sign now.
You could sign now, yeah.
Actually, could I steal one of the copies that I gave you?
Yeah, here, if you have this back.
Trade with you. Thank you. I should want to take them home and, you know...
Wallpaper your...
Exactly, put them on the fridge.
Signed under the Select Board column? You made a mistake and signed under the wrong one? Have it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Carol.
Kept it nice and brief.
Very nice. Wicked, nice and brief.
Yeah. All right. Now we're back with...
You need that hip.
Welcome back.
Sorry to sign everything. I didn't perfect the scribble yet.
She's very meticulous in signing.
Thank you.
I know, I used to get in trouble for that, now I just got everybody trained. Okay, is this a hearing also, or this is just an update?
These are hearings, this is just a...
So we're going to start, again, Jim McKay, Director of Public Works, with me tonight is Kirsten Ryan, she's our lead senior project manager from Kleinfelder. Kleinfelder has worked with us for over 10, 12 years and on many projects. So in the past couple of weeks, we've had very good news with the, from the DEP approving and just waiting for the approval letter for a PFAS plant to be put online. It was quite exciting that when we got the final report, if you looked at the, when we shut wells three, one and two down, the numbers were 20-point-something pots per trillion. After being offline for three years, we turned it back on, we pumped it into waste and we turned it on, and it was 27-point-something pots per trillion, still off. It went through the, the system that we spent 5-point-something million dollars on, and not only did it remove all the PFAS 6 numbers, it removed every PFAS. So I think that's a great thing from Kleinfelder Design and Engineering that, and it was quite a relief for me and Dave. Not standing here telling you, well, there's still two of them that it's putting PFAS out, I think we'd have a lot different discussion. So Kirsten's going to give a quick update on that, and then we'll get into a, signing the contract for wells, well three, for final design. And we're going to use the same type system, but she'll get more into that a little in depth. I just wanted to say that, you know, Kirsten is here, we have a team, I think of what, 12 people that work for Kleinfelder that we, me and Dave talk to on a daily basis. And it's almost a daily basis that we talk to somebody from Kleinfelder, or at least we report. And stormwater is part of this, and I think there's a little part of that, but we'll be back at the next meeting, Kirsten will be here for that, but I'll have contracts for you to approve for the stormwater aspect of it, because there's many breakdowns of that, and that's something you usually do once a year anyways. So with that, Kirsten gave you the good news.
Great. Hi, everybody, it's good to see everybody, thanks. I'm sharing my screen, just a brief update on the wells one and two plants that Jim mentioned, and then I'll roll right into the well three project and next steps on that. So as Jim said, there's a big team behind me and some of the other folks who you may have seen here, Tyler and others, but we, we're very pleased that the substantial completion of the plant is done. You know, there's just a few little minor punch list items the contractor's working through with us, but we had a startup test on June 28th with Mast EP present, and that went well. And the lab results with the PFAS results came back shortly thereafter, and they are all non-detect. So this is great. We just need the DEPs, the final piece of paperwork, approving the plant to go online. So we expect that to happen this month, and everything's on schedule and under budget. And I really want to thank Jim and his team, Dave Ramachi, Ron McKenny, Deirdre, I mean, so many folks really have made this a pretty smooth process. And the contractor, Winston Builders, I also want to acknowledge they've done a really good job. Tyler Bernier really has been the, you know, really the boots on the ground, day-to-day PM, so I want to acknowledge him as well. Just, you know, a couple of things that were accomplished on this project, the new wells were cleaned and relined, there's new well pumps in each of the pump houses now. And here's a quick photo for you of the interior of the new building with the granular activated carbon units, the four units and all the piping, and it's just looking really nice in there, so. So we appreciate that very much. If anybody has any questions, let me know, otherwise I'll just go right into the next project. So well three is the next well that needs PFAS treatment. And if folks may recall, I was here about a year ago at this time presenting the results of this townwide study that we did, looking at various alternatives, you know, which, which well should be treated, because they all have PFAS. So with wells one and two about to be PFAS-free, the next well in line is well number three. We did look at, you know, should we invest in wells five and six, should we invest in well four next? And well three was clearly the best choice, so that's the result of the study. It has high levels that are exceeding the state limit. It's got enough space to make the improvements. Well four has some limitations in terms of space, and so this will, this will take the next highest contamination well to be PFAS-free as well. You may be able to decommission well four and limit your use of wells five and six because the demand in town should be supplied by wells one and two, which are now going to be treated, and well three, for the most part. So that's a good thing. So we completed some pilot testing, very similar to what we did at wells one and two. This happened over the winter, spring. I won't go into the details, but, you know, basically pumping the raw water through a series of columns that mimic the conditions for treating with the GAC media. And the pilot testing essentially confirmed that the media will work for the particular raw water quality at well three, everything was non-detectable. So this confirmed our suspicion that that would be the right technology to use. And so what we've been doing over the past several months is completing the preliminary design report, very similar to what we did with wells one and two. We assessed the existing conditions at the site, looked at the layout of the property, the constraints with wetlands nearby, the existing facilities there, what would need it to be installed to make an upgraded treatment plan. So that report has been recently completed. And just really briefly, we'll, you know, tell you here what the design, the basis of the new design will be. Will be a new building with PFAS treatment, the GAC units, similar to what you saw in those photos I just showed you. A new well pump will be needed because when you're trying to push the same water through these big giant filters, you need a stronger pump. So same as we did with wells one and two, we need to upgrade well three. Similar type of building, metal building, construction. In this case, we're going to need to use above-ground backwash tanks, the groundwater table is very high there, and this is just going to be the most cost-effective way to hold on to the backwash water. And we'll add a new generator and other minor, minor improvements. So that's, that's the primary bulk of the work. Our preliminary design report updated an opinion of probable capital cost at roughly 6.9. That includes a pretty healthy contingency. So as we go forward into final design and, you know, complete that final design, we'll be narrowing down that cost and lowering the contingency to make sure we have the right number to go to a town meeting in November with. So one of the great things that you all know about is the EPA State Assistance Grant of 3.5 million dollars will be available for use for this project. It does require a town match of 20%. It does require a number of federal environmental reviews and procurement requirements be met, not really procurement, but materials, so American iron and steel products, we need to make sure we meet those specifications. And you will be eligible for a waiver of the Buy America, Build America provisions because of the timing, because you already studied this before that came into effect. So we've been working on a similar project under these federal review regulations, so we're familiar with them. It's, you know, it takes a little bit more time, a little bit of effort, but it's not nothing, you know, nothing unsurmountable, so. The other thing I wanted to mention is the state drinking water revolving fund loan program is something that we really recommend Millis also apply for, and we are ready to help you do that, is a 0% loan that could supplement that extra, you know, the remaining cost. And we actually, just as, as late as, I think Thursday afternoon, I haven't even talked to Jim about this, we talked to our contact at SRF and they believe that you may be eligible for emergency financing. What that means is it could accelerate the timeline for approval. So we, we could apply now, in essence, for that and get a decision before they're, usually it's spring before they tell you if you're eligible, so. What I, what I might recommend is the board maybe vote to approve Jim and us to work together to apply for any SRF financing that may be available, because the deadline is before August, your next meeting, it's in August 11th. And we can apply earlier than we think. So if, if a motion was worded very generally, you know, to proceed with seeking, you know, any available funding through the state SRF program, that would probably allow that to move forward.
And what are you calling that, the, you said SRF?
SRF, it's the State Revolving Loan Fund Program. State Revolving Fund Program. Yeah, that, you've, you've received some of the planning grants...
Yeah.
Like the lead services through the State Revolving Fund, yeah.
And that's a 0% design startup and construction loan.
Yeah.
Why don't we pause and take a motion on that now? It's not on the list. Do you want me to do it, Ellen?
I'm sorry.
I made notes. I make a motion that we authorize the town administrator and the DPW director in Kleinfelder to proceed to seek funding through the SRF funding, financing mechanism.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the town to proceed to seek funding, 0% loans through this process. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass unanimously. I saw you looking at your sheet, Ellen.
I'm desperate over here. Mike.
That was a surprise.
Just saying.
I know, that's my fault.
It was a game time decision. It was an audible.
That was a game day motion.
But I thought it would probably be a pretty easy decision.
Yeah. Yeah, you say 0% interest, I'm right there.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Making sure you're paying attention, that's all.
The only thing that's better is if they pay you to take the money.
Yeah, no kidding.
Right. I mean, it's not, it's not a grant, but it's 0%.
Yeah, it's good.
So yeah, so the next steps would be to move ahead with final design. That work would include, you know, finalizing major equipment, layout, all the drawings, specifications, cost estimate, all the permitting that goes along with that, as I mentioned, the federal environmental reviews and permitting. We want to get started with that right away, make sure we, you know, don't run into roadblocks and we know what we need to do. And, and then the funding support will be part of our, of our work with, with Jim and you.
And when do we think we'd be ready to move forward?
Oh, sorry.
Never mind, continue. You were right there on the next page.
Oh, yeah, were you asking about schedule?
Yes.
All right, yes, so...
I'm not following on this, I'm following on that. I'm not following on this, I'm following on that.
Yeah, so we have provided that contract. We're ready to start immediately. We're ready to start and submit the SRF loan applications right away. And have basically the design nearly complete in time for the fall town meeting where, you know, you would need to appropriate the construction costs, construction fees, part of it. Yeah, we think that we could start bidding as early as December. I have down here, SRF decision expected January to March. Again, that may be earlier. We, I mean, the SRF folks, DEP are, are still kind of figuring this all out too. But anyway, at that, it's the latest that we think that that would get started. But construction, basically, we think could start in, in spring, subject to the SRF timing. Because the thing with SRF is that you want to get their approval before you award the contract. So you can make sure that it's going to get reimb, you know, you're going to get the loan. And then, yeah, so we think this would be, you know, about 12 to 18-month construction schedule.
So we'd be going to town meeting to ask for funding before we knew if we had the 0% loan? Is that the way I'm reading this?
Um, yes.
Or do they say you've been accepted, now we have to do all the stuff the state does that drags it out until March of '24?
I mean, with the federal, with part of your funding from the federal source, we kind of have to do, we jump through all the hoops anyway.
Yeah.
It's the same set of hoops, essentially, because the SRF program is federal money that goes down through the state.
Okay.
So, you know, that's a good question, but I, I think it's, it's, you would need to appropriate it anyway because it is a loan reimb, and reimbursed itself.
Yeah, it's just easier to appro, to make the case if it's a 0% interest because people are very worried about interest rates.
Of course, of course.
Non, you know, tax-exempt nonprofit towns aren't being hit.
I think if we, if we got an application into them, I mean, actually, the SRF administrator said, just, just send us something in writing.
Yeah.
I think they would let us know this summer. So I'm sure you'll know.
Just anything we can put in there to explain it. And not that, not that the PFAS has ever faced a lot of issue because it's drinking water and you need it.
Right.
But it's better to be able to make a strong case.
Yep.
Yeah.
So.
I read.
Not yet. Request, I know, I'm sorry, questions?
No.
Nope.
Do you have any questions?
Um, no, I think I asked them on my way. Mine were, timing and, and what is SRF? And I got both of those answered. So again, this is another subject that, you know, I talked to the town administrator probably much more than he'd like to admit, but we do talk about it quite often. And I first would recommend that we, you know, continue to work with Kleinfelter on this pro, project. And I think you have to take a vote that is part of the, because we don't have to go out and get bids for engineering services. And I think we both, he can speak for himself, but I think we both agree with that. And I would ask that you allow the town administrator to sign a contract with Kleinfelter. And I believe they've already approved it.
So that's addendum A that actually shows the amounts that was not in your package. For some reason, I don't know why, whole thing printed, but addendum A didn't print with it when I printed it. I didn't know until today.
Jim was referring to the motion under section 145.
Yeah. 272, 900.
Yep.
Yeah.
Correct.
All right. So let's go with that motion right now, the first one of the two on there.
23, 145.
You got it. First paragraph, first one, two motions.
Oh, I move that the board approve the agreement with Kleinfelter for the final design of Well 3 in an amount not to exceed 272,9. And to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement on behalf of the board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, to have the town administrator sign the contract on behalf of the board for $272,900 with Kleinfelter for Well 3. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass unanimously. So next on your docket, we have the Water Management Act permit update. And we're going to need a vote.
Do you want that instead of the stormwater update?
Yeah.
Just one line?
Might as well stick with all water.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Because that's the permit.
It's Adriah.
So I actually sent you, I'm sorry, does, do you have a question?
No, well, Adriah was next on the agenda.
Okay, Adriah, can you just wait?
For stormwater.
Can we do the, do you want to do the water permit first?
Last DEP.
Yeah, let's, let's do all the DEP permit. Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry.
I know, it was just on the.
I'm throwing you guys a curveball.
So I'll give you a little bit of background while Kirsten finds it. As you know, we're up for a permit for the past five years and they've been, been delayed and delayed and delayed. We received a, a temp, a temporary permit and we were allowed to comment, working with Kleinfelter, the town administrator and I, and Dave, we had several comments that we sent back to them. One of the biggest glitches that we felt was unacceptable was, you know, now that we have these PFAS plants and maybe with projection of the third one of selling water to different towns. We may not ever want to do that, but they, they were taking that away from us. So, you know, with Kirsten's, you know, diligence, she, you know, they have, as you read the permit, we're, we're still going to be able, allowed to sell the water to them, to the towns. The next one was, was a big stickler for me was the, the watering ban. And as much as it's not as, as strict as what we lived through last year, it, it's, it's, it's still going to be strict, but not, not as bad as, you know, because it would still be a calendar triggered year that, that we both agree that it's best for Melis. And what a calendar mean, trigger mean is it goes from May to September 30th. And that's where we're in right now. Right now, we have a mandated no drinking. No drinking. No watering, outside watering between the hours of 9 and 5. And then there's exceptions of that, that a part of the permit. And we were, I think we were asked to do this, but it was in between your meetings. So we did, I applied for an extension. So after Kirsten gives an explanation, we're going to have to, we have a time to comment, but it won't be in the time of your next meeting. So I would ask if you would take the vote to accept this tonight.
I have a question.
Yes.
And I don't know if you'll get to this, but we had, you know, we've done the work on some of those fields out there. And we had some discussion about if we ever found ourselves in the position again that we did last year, that we'd find a way to water them. Is that some kind of an exception or something that we've been able to work in?
So the, the permit, that, that, in the temporary permit, and I believe it would be in the other one, that municipal recreational fields are not under that, there's still another restriction between 9 and 5, but they, they won't fall under the.
Total ban?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. A total ban. Because I don't want to spend another $4,000 doing it again.
$10,000, yeah. Just to watch them completely die.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So Kirsten, if you want to.
Yeah, I guess just to kind of summarize or build upon a little bit what Jim said, that the 2010 permit was the prior permit authorized you 0.99 MGD for a mile of the wells. In 2014, the regulations changed, added new permit conditions. And then in 2022, MSDEP went through this five-year review process that incorporates the new 2014 regulation changes into your permit. So they issued Melis a sort of a, this is your review, this is things you need to respond to. So we worked on that with Jim and Mike. And provided DEP with information. We sort of pushed back on some of those changes that were proposed. We prepared that response. So just wanted to, and it's a little wordy, don't worry about it, I'll just give you the highlights. But some of the significant proposed changes were, as Jim mentioned, they wanted to eliminate the exception for water sales to Franklin and upstream communities, which, which is within your permit. And we basically argued that because Melis was proactive and is instituting PFAS treatment, it gives you the ability to help these other communities who are also going to be dealing with, most likely dealing with PFAS treatment. So DEP agreed to that and let the, the sales exemption stay that would allow you to sell water to those other communities. The other change, which they did not accept our argument, was reducing that 0.99. They want to reduce it down to 0.84 MGD with jarl limit. And this is based on the fact that Melis's actual demand is averaging about 0.63 MGD. So there's not really much basis that we can argue to stay, you know, 30% higher than what you're actually using. But DEP is putting this in as an interim permit. And they basically said, within the next four years, we'll do a water needs forecast update for Melis. We'll see what that says based on population trends. And then if it shows that you need more, we will, you know, they'll work with you to bring that level back up. But we thought that was a reasonable argument. There wasn't really much we could argue against. So that's essentially, I think what you're here to decide is, are you accepting of these changes that DEP is proposing? If you, if you aren't accepting of them, then we would need to start a negotiation process, meeting with DEP and trying to make a counter argument. I, I don't have strong counter arguments right now for you. So my recommendation would be to, would be to accept the permit as, as it's proposed. Some of the other new permit requirements that are involved here, you're already in compliance with some of these, the unaccounted for water of 10% needs to some, needs to be something to just keep an eye on because it does fluctuate. And that's a matter of just keeping up with leak detection, which I know Jim is doing. So you're in compliance for the past two years. And as you mentioned, the outdoor water use, it does include a new trigger. If the Charles River has a low, seven-day low flow of a certain volume, then, you know, you would need to go to a stricter ban. That should be relatively rare. And that's across the board for every community. So, or sorry, every Charles River community. So we've already completed the minimization plan that's required. So that's all done. That was part of the OTC response we did. So, you know, aside from that withdrawal limit dropping, that's the major, major change here.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? All right, well, we need a motion to approve the changes to the permit.
Second one?
You got it.
I move that the board approve the MSDEP water permit as presented.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve the permit. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass unanimously.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next is Adriah, and she's from Kleinfelter. I think she's joined us by Zoom. Stormwater. In the first five years of the permit, we went through a lot of paperwork aspects of getting things in line. So we've completed that aspect. And I think the most important thing, and you'll see in this slide presentation, Melis is in compliance with everything to do with stormwater. And that's a, that's what all that money we've been spending is to keep us in compliance. We submit two large reports. One was just completed on June 10th or June 30th, and that was done and completed on time. It's a 600 and something page report. So I didn't bother sending you that.
No, you didn't.
Shut up.
I can let you know that with, you know, Peter is the lead person. He's just on vacation. You can't get anybody smarter than him on, on the stuff. He's been very good advising us what to do. A lot of aspects of this year is training. And Adriah will get into, you know, we, now we have to go out, it's boots on the ground now. We've got to get out there and we have to start producing, testing of almost every asphalt in our entire system. And that's going to take a good five to so many years. And we have to start making repairs on our own. And there's going to be a change of, it, it's not going to, when I say change to the charter, it's going to be a change that's under your direction that we will present to you before, in the next couple of months of, of different types of language on keeping us in compliance. And it's just, you know, footage and stuff like that. So I'll let Adriah take this over and she can handle it for us.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah. Okay, great. Thank you. So I'm Adriah Victor. I am presenting for Kleinfelter tonight. So I'm part of a larger MS4 team, Peter Varga, Sadia Khan, Jeff Ling, Portia Freeman, AJ Sharma. So there's quite a few people supporting this effort. So I want to give them credit as well. So as Jim mentioned, you know, the key item here is that Melis is fully compliant, compliant with your stormwater permit. You've been consistent year over year, you know, working hard to meet these, meet the permit requirements. So this past fiscal year, we supported the town on their annual report, the SWMP update. So that's the Stormwater Management Program. That's the very large report that Jim just mentioned. The IDDE, which is the Illicit Discharge Detection Elimination Program. There are a lot of acronyms in, in MS4. So that program continued this year. There was also some updates on the public education and outreach. There were, we did a review on your ordinances and made suggested revisions for updates on those that Jim just mentioned. And a key item this year was the phosphorus control plan, or the PCP. Because Melis is a Charles River watershed community, there are specific requirements because of that. So I'll go through these. The SWMP update, so this was an existing document. The town updates annually and it includes what your yearly MS4 activities were. So for permit year five, this include updates on the revisions to your bylaws, an updated list of retrofit sites, which is five sites within the town that could be retrofitted for stormwater best management practices, the phosphorus control plan, and then just overall activities that were completed. So this is the public messaging meeting, reporting on your fieldwork, the IDDD investigation, and the phosphorus control planning. So Jim mentioned boots on the ground. So that's really the IDDE program. That includes quite a bit of fieldwork, it, which has, you know, some of that has already been completed. Some of the dry weather screening completed near three in 2021. We're now in the catchment investigation. So that is ongoing. And based on those catchment investigations, the map, the map, the GIS maps are updated as well. So that's ongoing too. As of this year, the June 30th deadline that Jim just mentioned, 32 out of your 162 MS4 catchments were investigated. So that's 20%. You know, I mentioned that the town has been very consistent in getting this work done. So we want to help you maintain that consistency. All investigations need to be completed by 2028. So to do that, we've kind of laid out a schedule for the town to continue, you know, completing those catchments per year. That looks like approximately six field days with, you know, a two-member crew. And as of right now, you know, part of those field investigations is looking for those, you know, illicit discharges. And none were found this year. The, this year, we also supported public education and outreach. So we created some postcards for some of the TMGL impairment requirements. So that is spring grass clipping and yard waste maintenance and septic tank maintenance. We also have a draft of a fall leaf litter pamphlet that is required to go out in the fall. So that will, you'll be seeing that shortly. There are quite a few requirements for public education. There's certain specific timing, like spring and fall. So we drafted a public outreach calendar to make it a little bit easier for the town to know when they need to post these, when they need to send them, so that these can all be coordinated and submitted on time. The ordinance review and updates. So we worked with Jim to develop proposed revisions to comply with their permit. So specifically, that's looking at the land subdivision rules and regulations in the zoning bylaw. And what the permit requires is that you look at ways to decrease the creation of impervious area and to allow for the implementation of green infrastructure. So those are the two kind of guiding factors. And so this looks at, you know, language to consider the street location and width, change, potentially change your cul-de-sac standards, allow for permeable pavement, allow for certain exceptions to include green infrastructure with your landscaping. But at this point, those revisions But at this point, those revisions have been drafted and they're going to require some support from other departments within the town, specifically planning, conservation, you folks, DPW. So this is a, you know, a 2024 effort at this point to kind of understand, you know, and receive comments from, from other departments. So the phosphorus control plan, it's a multi-phase plan going up to 2038. So right now, we just finished phase one of the plan and, you know, that is written. The implementation is, is starting now, continuing for the next five years, as well as starting to draft phase two of the plan. So as the Charles River watershed community, you know, this is very prescriptive in the permit for Millis. So you are required to reduce your phosphorus by forty-three point seven pounds per year by 2038. They have specific milestones as well. So there's a twenty-five percent milestone by phase one of the permit, which is July first, 2028. And so that's ten point nine pounds per year of phosphorus. So currently, you can receive those credits to reduce phosphorus by non-structural controls, which are things like street sweeping and catch basin cleaning, as well as structural controls. So that might be, you know, an infiltration trench, some sort of biofiltration, kind of a more structural stormwater BMP that you might, you might think of. So at this point, Millis is getting credit for their street sweeping twice per year, one point six pounds, and then credit for your catch basin cleanings as well. So. Sure. Yeah.
Phosphorus by forty-three. It sounds so preposterous, but phosphorus, preposterous. Is it doable? Is this like a real goal? Or is this?
It's like pie in the sky. You kidding me?
It's a, it's a real goal. Yep. They, you know, they have very specific. Yeah.
I, I, I know that, the way I was told is mainly is street sweeping. So if you take the street sweeper that we have, it is not, it is not in compliance with, which could lower. If we just used a, which we're probably going to have to come back and maybe replace our street sweeper because it's not a vacuum type street sweeper. It's just a broom-related sweeper. So everything that gets swept up is just blows back into the air. A vacuum type sweeper, I mean, and that, I think, what did Peter say? That was like forty-something, whatever. It, it, it's a large number to lower that number.
Just for that.
Just for that. The catch basin cleaning. The, the catch basin, I think they highlighted these two expect, you know, big things. The catch basin cleaning, this was our first year that we actually went out. They, the contractor measured the catch basin. He cleaned the catch basin out and he saw how much of the sump was gone. So when he goes out there next year, if it's built up to that same height, that cat, that one catch basin may have to be cleaned up more twice, three, four times a year. So that could be something that we may have to get into, invest in a catch basin truck and another employee to do that. And those are the big things that lower the phosphorus numbers. And training and, and putting a ban on, which I'm sure the Board of Health would love, is the fertilizing. You know, depending on what type of fertilizing. And those are just some things that, that lower that number. Am I correct with that? I think.
Yeah. Yes, Jim. They have very prescriptive ways of calculating these credits. So as you mentioned, that, you know, they give you different credits for what type of broom you're using. So right now, you're using a mechanical broom. You could, you can potentially get more credit for, you know, a different type of vacuum, a different type of frequency. And, and you're correct, you know, to get the catch basin cleaning credit, you need to maintain your catch basins at, you know, less than the fifty percent capacity. So, you know, depending on what, what they see when they clean these catch basins this year and, and next year, that will impact the frequency that needs to be maintained so that you can, you know, keep your catch basins less than fifty percent full.
So that would get us to nineteen pounds. Yeah. So we wouldn't have to replace our street sweeper. Next year, we could get to it later as we get to that.
Yeah.
Because our goal for the first period is only ten year, or ten pounds.
Yeah.
Right.
That ten pound could, with the street sweeper, could lower it right away.
Yeah, but we can wait for it to get a little bit older and need replacing. If we're getting to nineteen this way. Yeah. I'm not opposed to buying a new street sweeper.
I get it. Just to put it in perspective, that's all. I just wanted to see if, you know, the state comes out with some numbers sometimes and they're just, they're not attainable. But to know it's attainable is nice. Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. And we're expecting a new MS four permit soon. And, you know, they're likely going to maybe tweak the way that these calculations are done. But you're right, it is, it's, those numbers are kind of hard to, hard to think about and conceptualize. But at this point, you know, as it stands right now with the way that you're doing your street sweeping, catch basin cleaning, you are receiving about nineteen, nineteen pounds per year of phosphorus reduction credit. So you're, you're correct. You know, you're meeting that phase one target, you know, with, with what you're doing right now. So these are the approximate costs for. Sorry, what? Yeah, keep that thing, keep that thing going. These are the phase one implementation costs for, you know, for your street sweeping and catch basin cleaning approximately. You know, at this point, this is, it doesn't include installation of any storm, of any structural BMPs, which we'll get to in just a second. So, you know, to meet that forty-three point seven pounds, you have about, about twenty-five pounds per year remaining. And you can achieve that by, you know, installation of structural BMPs. However, you do have about fifty structural BMPs already. We do need a little bit more information from, you know, from the designers of those BMPs and, and from the town to get, to calculate the credit for those. So we need the design information as well as operation and maintenance logs to receive the, the credit. So, you know, we've targeted helping, helping the town.
What is a BMP?
Sorry, another acronym. It's a best management practice. So you can think of that as like a rain garden or an area of permeable pavement. It's a really broad term. But they use it to kind of collectively refer to, you know, a, a stormwater or a green infrastructure, you know, unit, let's say. Does that help?
You take, you take your, your basins you have, those large retention basins.
Yes.
When you put them in, you signed a BMP to maintain them.
I did.
You did.
I remember that.
And now that that's the, the homeowners association has it.
It picks it up.
Reinforce that to make sure that that's being, those BMPs are being enforced.
I had this weird acronym that ended in phosphorus, but anyway.
I know, I thought it was a chemical too. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, thanks for chiming in there, Jim, too. So at this point, we've identified that as, you know, you might be able to get a significant part of your, you know, twenty-five remaining pounds from those BMPs. Some of them might only get a very small amount of credit. We don't know yet. But we've identified that as an item for 2024 to kind of help, you know, pull that, pull of that, all of that information together and, and develop that inventory and, and see where you're, where you stand with, with credits for those. So next steps for this next fiscal year, continue the IDDE program. So a lot of that field effort, you know, continue the catchment investigations and the wet weather outfall screening. You know, push forward on the ordinance review and updates. So it was scheduled for 2024. The phosphorus control plan, that structural BMP inventory and, you know, seeing where you line up with that remaining twenty-five pound reduction requirement. Continue with your public education and outreach. Submit your annual report, which is due in September for this previous year. And then continue with the stormwater management program plan updates. So that's, you know, an annual requirement. But I, I said it before, but I want to maintain that, you know, the town has done a really good job being consistent on these efforts. You know, there's a lot of coordination with Jim and his team to get all of this information together and, you know, just continuing to push forward, you know, especially on that, that field effort to, to, you know, continue your twenty percent in there now, and you have a few years left. So, yeah, we're, you know, the, the town has done a really good job keeping this going. So happy to be a part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, there's no vote here. I will be coming probably back at the next meeting with contracts that, because most of these are over the $10,000 limit that the town administrator and I can approve. So we'll have those contracts probably for you at your August meeting to keep this going. So I want to thank Adriya and Kirsten for coming tonight. There's a lot of work. I mean, it, it's, people wonder where does all this money go? And most importantly, we, you know, we have a great working relationship with, with Kleinfelder. You know, they're here anytime we need. Kirsten, I think she was in Ireland and I was texting her, I believe, when she was away. And, but that just shows that, you know, that's a good project coordinator. You know, we do spend a lot of money. We pay Kleinfelder a lot of money. But unfortunately, that's, that's the way the town's set up and that's the way we, you know, we don't have the staff here. And I don't think that having one person to handle all this is not going to, you can't do it.
I agree.
You'd almost have to have one individual person to handle each different aspect of it. I mean, most importantly, with the stormwater, Kleinfelder helped us, helped us build a, a platform and how to collect funds that everybody's using now. Most of the small towns, just like PFAS, they were all coming and they were all starting to build them. You know, programs like this. Franklin just instituted a fee for stormwater. Medway's looking at it, Medfield, they're all looking at it because these costs here, like you just saw, fifty, sixty thousand dollars to clean your streets and that's for us. So you can imagine double, triple what it's going to cost them to, to take care of it. So again, I would ask that we continue with using Kleinfelder for our stormwater aspects. And I believe the town administrator can speak on that behalf also, because he talks to them too.
I do, and I, I agree with that. I think they've done a great job for us. I think there's value in continuity. They're very aware of our systems. They're also sensitive to, you know, the financial aspects of this and the impact on the town. So, and they've done outstanding work. So I would support moving forward at this point with them and continuing this work for the town.
Yeah, I think we've been very satisfied, so.
I agree.
All right.
I just want to say, I want to say one thing because you don't think I give you credit. But I know Kleinfelder this and Kleinfelder blah, 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 blah. But you're really running the show and they speak so highly of you. There must be some truth in there. And we are compliant in everything and we are ahead of the game. And we are like the forerunner. And, and seriously, I think it's all you. I mean, I just, I, I don't know if people know that, but you're just killing this.
It's also with the town administrator, you know, again. We go in there and, and sometimes we close the door and we may not have the comms of conversations about all this stuff. But it's, you know, I, we both have faith in each other, I think, working on this.
But it's just extraordinary.
It's, it's, we've been very successful. The PFAS alone is just shockingly good. And the, the phosphorus numbers, just seeing that we are above ten pounds of what we're doing now, that's great. I mean, I think we're moving in the right direction on everything.
We're at the vanguard on a lot of.
We really are. Little Millis.
Yep. Little Millis.
Right?
Yep. Thanks.
All right, Jim, don't go anywhere.
No, I'm not.
We'll move on to the next item.
Do you want to start with the one you gave me today?
I can give you, yes, we can start with the one.
I have that to hand out.
Was there more?
Yeah, there was one.
That was not in the, we have one more that was not in the.
What is this?
This wasn't in the motions, I think.
This was one more contract that we need to approve.
So there's actually like the contracts.
There's almost like five of them, but, so let me give you an update. The paving contract is going to be opened on the 12th of July. And unfortunately, I don't know what that's going to do with the schedule because we're not going to, your next meeting is August 14th.
Fourteenth.
So I don't know if that's going to really put a damper on starting work on paving.
I will say that we can have a very quick special meeting if it does not put a damper on paving.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's going to have a detriment on operations.
Only one item, we do that. It'll turn into six, but we'll start with one item.
You could even do it by Zoom if necessary.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll work.
I don't want to slow that down any, so, so once you get information, don't.
Thank you.
Yeah, keep me abreast of the date.
So the first one was one that I did forget. It, we have a, a blockbuster of trees that are going to be taken care of. So I would ask that Stumpy's is the new contractor with the M A P C. And I, I didn't put a not to exceed on this one because Oak Grove also uses them. And if I put an exceed on it, that means that they would have to come back and ask you. So the, the funding that the DPW has is fifteen thousand dollars. And if you remember all the town meeting articles that were appropriated over the past couple of years, there's still a balance of fifty-seven, seven ninety-three fifty. There's some lodge trees on Pleasant Street that are going to have to be taken down because of the sidewalk, hopefully. That we're going to be able to put the sidewalk in there. I think you saw on Plain Street, we took down one of the lodge, one of those lodge dead ones that, that was further up. But Eversource took that down. So we, we still work at Eversource. Brutus and I try to, if it's close to the lines and they, and they take it down for us. But I do see that there's fifty-seven thousand dollars because we've carried this from year to year and it's, we need to spend it. Because it is a town meeting article. And there are a lot of dead trees out there that need to be taken down. On Ridge Street, there's still plenty. So I would ask the, do you want an exceed number on that? Mike, I, I don't.
I mean, you could put, you were thinking about putting the maximum of the funding you have available?
I did, and but if, that means if Oak Grove, if they use them, because they do use them a lot, they'd have to come back.
Would, I mean, but for appropriating for your appropriation as opposed to the other group, even though it's the same vendor, would that make it, I'm speaking like I know what I'm talking about. But I'm, in my business, that would work, but I don't know if that works here.
How much, how much in tree work?
Let's add ten thousand to it.
Yeah, so you could, you could add total of ten thousand to those amounts.
For Oak Grove?
For Oak Grove.
So they not exceed twenty-five or?
Eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Am I making a motion that's not in front of me?
Yes.
Yes.
You're going to, we've got the motions in front of you, which is the.
It's just DMO.
Which is the Chevy Silverado, the super.
No, you got this one too.
This is the separate one I just handed you.
No, no, but written in motion.
You just have to add one item at the bottom of that list.
We have a list of motions.
This one?
Yeah. It's going to be eighty-two thousand dollars. Eighty-two thousand.
You can do it all in one motion, Ellen, if you need to do all of them.
You can approve all five in one motion.
Oh, okay. Hold on.
And so these other items?
The other ones, all these other items were approved at the Maytown meeting.
Okay.
And they're, they're in there and.
Yep, that's what I thought, town meeting, yeah. So all we have to do is put in, Ellen, we just have to put in Stumpy's Tree Service, not to exceed.
Eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, so I'm doing motion twenty-three, one, forty-six.
You got it.
I moved that the board vote to approve the following purchases and authorize the town administrator execute all agreements related thereto. A 2023, 24 Chevy Silverado 3500 dump truck from Liberty Chevrolet, not to exceed ninety-five, five, twenty-seven. A Cam Superline heavy-duty ten-wheel trailer from Yerid Trailers, not to exceed twenty-three thousand dollars. A chlorine slash pH analyzers from Carl Loadz and Company, not to exceed thirty-one, two. And an FY20 Wolf four, one, one. INI investigation by GCG Associates, not to exceed one thirty-seven, six, thirty. And a.
Stumpy's Tree Service.
Stumpy's Tree Services.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
A lot of purchases have been moved and seconded as enumerated in the, in the list here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you're done. All right. Natural gas.
Natural gas, right?
Yes. You're up.
Natural gas.
No pictures this time. Just a one-page contract.
Awesome.
Good evening. Bob Weiss, Energy Manager for the town. Tonight, well, you know, we have secured a very good natural gas offer for the town's buildings and facilities through the middle of 2028. So tonight, I'm going to ask the board to authorize our town administrator sign contract with Direct Energy. You have the preliminary bid offer in your packet. You were given that this, this afternoon. As you know, gas and oil prices have. have, they peaked about a, a year ago. They've been dropping somewhat steadily until the spring, when they evened off. And we began several months ago to check these prices all the time. We worked very hard with our broker for the past few months in securing the best price for a stable future for, for gas prices. We found that the thirty-six-month offer there, you have four, you'll, you'll see, there's four offers there, thirty-six month is the best value, because we had to take into consideration that the high school, middle school renovation will be happening at this time, and they'd be finished by the end of this contract. So the heating demand would, of that building would change significantly. So there is a motion that I attached here, kind of a fill in the blank and make some.
I have a better one.
We have the blanks filled.
Don't panic. I have a better one.
You got it all filled?
I do.
Excellent.
We ready?
Ready.
Ready. I moved at the board vote to authorize the town administrator to sign a three-year natural gas fuel supply contract with Direct Energy at a price of zero point zero eight nine one per decatherm, a plus or minus five and a half percent for municipal and school accounts for calendar years 2025, 26, and 27.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the administrator to sign the contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I, I use Direct Energy as well at work, and this is a good price.
Very good.
Have to give them a call.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Bob does a lot of extensive research to get these aggressive prices. So he's been monitoring this for several months now. And we, I think we're hitting a sweet spot on closing the deal.
It's good, good. What's next, wireless?
Wireless, I think. Yep.
I think that's me. So we recently put out an RFP for lease of land to install and operate a wireless service tower and communications facility at 121 Norfolk Road in Millis, an area where we had a gap in service. This process started back in 2018, when a town meeting article was approved, authorizing the board to lease a portion of town-owned land located at that location for a period of not to exceed thirty years. A number of things held up the process. But we are finally here. We finally got the RFP out. And we had two different responses to the RFP. And after consultation with town council and reviewing it, we have a recommendation. And so Mike and I are recommending that select board do vote to accept the June eighth, 2023 proposal, which was submitted by Wireless Edge at an annual base rate of twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars, with an escalation of base rent at two point five percent per year, which is paid to us on a monthly basis. Colocation revenue share percentage of fifty percent to be paid on a monthly basis, and permit bonus paid upon receipt of all approvals, which is the building permits, of thirty thousand dollars. And this would be for a lease period of not to exceed thirty years. So this is a great revenue source for the town, and another great revenue source for the town. It's been some time coming, but we think it's a great.
Awesome. Money's good.
Money's good, so it's good news.
Okay, we ready?
We're set.
I moved at the board vote to accept the June eighth, 2023 proposal from Wireless Edge for an annual base rate of twenty-nine, four twelve, with an annual escalation of two and a half percent. Colocation revenue share fifty percent and other terms outlined by the agreement for a period of thirty years.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Goals.
Did you add my goal, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I added your goal. Had Mike added.
It was good.
Four B.
Where are the goals?
They're not in the packet.
They're not in the packet. Oh, I have the goals. Sorry, hold on.
Because I didn't get them done until Sunday.
It's okay.
I blame Craig.
Yeah, it's completely my fault.
Notification.
There you go.
Are you skipping over the housing authority letter, then?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question about that, though. Is it possible? No, it's not. It's gotta be voted on at a meeting, right?
Yeah.
You didn't get a chance to look at it or anything?
No, not yet.
There's, there's the copies to review. So I'll add that to the next. I'll add that to the fourteenth.
Okay. I think it's good.
Yeah, I'll read it.
Some numbers need to be tweaked on it, that's all.
Oh, do they? All right, good.
That's okay.
That's okay. Obviously, I'm not a math person. I missed that completely.
Okay. All right, so these are the goals that we wrote up over the last two meetings.
Yep.
Unless there's any comments or questions or suggestions, other than the addition of the DPW's street sweeping, which now maybe we need to buy a better street sweeper.
It's on the list.
Yeah. I, I did see the amount of sweeping in front of your office the day after our meeting, so.
I took a picture.
Figured you did.
If I had a Facebook page, I'd put it on it.
Yeah. But they slowed me down getting to work.
Did it?
Yeah, yeah. So, so I'm not a giant fan, but it was a nice thing to have done.
Please don't tell Jim it slowed you down.
I was fine with it. But no, it, it, I think that's a good addition. Anything else on here that we need to add, or are we ready to accept as written?
I think we're good.
All right.
I think we're good. I think the goals are good.
All right, then we'll give the motion to approve the goals.
I moved at the board vote to adopt the FY twenty-four select board goals as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the goals as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't call for comments. Please, I'm sorry. Yeah.
And I just wanted to note, so this, again, is under the agenda portion, but I will also add it to the page. On the left-hand side, it says goals for the different years.
Hi, Paul Simpson, 52 Island Road. As one who stayed, I wanted to just make a couple of comments. And I know you're at the very beginning of this process. So I think it's great that you have these goals. There's a lot going on in town, and we have a lot of competing priorities and, and things to do. I did want to just maybe, like, you're at the very beginning of the process, under improved town infrastructure, and particularly with some of the properties in open space. As you're proceeding in your investigation of what you might want to do with some of these properties, just please try to keep in mind, like, what some of the impacts to the local residents of these areas might be. And things come to mind, again, off the top of my head, water and sewer impact, you know, drainage, water levels, you know, things like that, environmental, some of these properties. And I'm, I'm speaking, full disclosure, I'm a Buck Cassidy property, so I'm familiar with some of these. There's wildlife and nature, you know, that, you know, these properties as well. I think it might just be, this is a good time, as you're at the beginning of your process, just to think about these things. Because I think sometimes, as you, not you, you know, but, you know, investigate, you know, different, different potential projects, they sound very good at a high level, you know, sound and feel good. But then as you start to investigate what some of the issues might be, once the ball gets rolling, it just, it gets hard to, like, adjust. So just wanted to make that general comment. I think I've made these comments before, but, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. I appreciate the comment. All right. Now, I don't know if we voted, so we'll vote now again. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There we go. Passed unanimously.
Is it the dispatch?
It's the, yes. This was approved, the board approved this at the executive session.
Yep.
Last time. This is just ratifying it in open session to make it official.
All right.
Let me just make a motion.
I think you should.
I moved at the board vote to approve the consolidated Millis Police Association dispatcher contract as presented in the agenda packet.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the dispatch contract as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed unanimously.
Oh, my God.
All right. All right, next we have liaison.
Liaison updates.
Got anything?
Oh, my God, liaison.
You don't have anything, do you?
I have to be honest. I don't even know what, you gotta send the list out to us. Because I have.
I will send it again. I thought I did, but maybe I didn't.
You did.
And if we can just get the invites on the calendars.
I'll send it again.
It's in the minutes.
I'm not getting, like, invited to anything. I'm not.
Yeah, so that's a good question.
Do they know?
I will say that they do know. And so, but I think there haven't been a ton of meetings, because it's been summer and Fourth of July, so.
This is a low period.
Except sure.
I think be careful what you wish for. You may get a whole bunch. But I will absolutely, I will check it and make sure people are, are aware.
Around Labor Day, it'll pick up massively.
Right.
So only because I did actually attend one, because they do invite me.
Oh, my God. I'm kidding.
The Economic Development Committee. We spent a lot of time talking about complete streets. They're prioritizing about four hundred thousand dollars worth of, maybe five hundred, four to five hundred thousand dollars worth of projects for street improvements that will be funded by a state grant. We have to do the engineering costs associated with those. If they're approved, if they're accepted by the state, the state will fund them. They started with forty-plus design ideas for street improvements. And we picked the five that we thought were the most impactful. Some of them are as simple as the tactile street crossing things on 109, the bumps, where we don't have any. That was one.
The yellow bumps when you cross.
And others were quite elaborate and required some engineering. Some of them might be able to done, be done as part of our normal paving program, too. Some of them were ludicrous. You can get a good time looking at rotary designs that make no sense to us.
Rotary in Millis?
It's not even a rotary. Anyway, but it's not on the recommended list. But out of those forty ideas, some of them were quite creative. But there's some really good ideas that are gonna come out of that. And there will be state funding for them if we do the engineering work. We have to pay for the engineering design. So it's something they'll be presenting in front of us shortly, probably next meeting or the one following. We get our request in for the grants and see how that all plays out. And we talked about, a little bit about the role of the Economic Development Committee. There's some confusion discussion about whether they are looking at things like complete streets and the MBTA housing issue, or should they be focusing on downtown development and true economic development? So that was a point of discussion. We do now have an MBTA housing subcommittee that was formed.
Right.
That's looking at that. So that took it off the plate of the Economic Development Committee. But it started there. It really wasn't, I mean, it wasn't a bad fit, but it wasn't the best fit for that committee. And I think there's a division on the committee, or discussion on the committee between whether we're looking at the housing and road infrastructure or the business infrastructure, looking at these downtown business associations and things like that. So that was a discussion.
Does Millis have a business?
They don't. But there is a grant available to look at creating something. So they're looking at pursuing that as well.
That'd be good.
Mr. Chair, did they talk about, I know that board at the last meeting talked to, about the signs and whatnot for parking.
Yeah, we were gonna talk about.
Yeah, that wasn't, we didn't get that on the agenda in time to discuss.
But it's gonna go on the next one, I think.
But we did bring it up under the guise of complete streets and parking and stuff. So it'll be discussed in a lot more detail the next meeting.
Did anybody show up for that?
No, because we couldn't discuss it officially. So it was just an announcement that the select board had discussed this. At our next meeting, we'd like to put this on the agenda.
Excellent.
And that's about as far as that went, because it wasn't officially an agenda item.
Listen, you did what you could do.
I did everything I could do. All right. Minutes. Not to get excited, but we have, how many more? Twenty-one?
Not many.
How many more?
She's been, I have to look through. She's got, still has a stack of things that got updated that we're just slowly trying to.
I think they're pretty much done. It's just a matter, we don't want to throw ten meetings at you at once.
Yeah, they're done.
If we approve the streets, you know, the, I'm sorry, the, if we approve the street paving at a special ad hoc meeting, throw six of them at us.
All right, will do. She'll be thrilled.
But anything else you put on that agenda, be very prudent about.
Yes, agreed.
All right. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
Oh, I moved the board vote to approve the minutes for the following meetings, 10:25, 21, 6623, and 62023.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Congratulations. Now, I'll make a motion to enter executive session to consider the purchase or lease of real property, if such discussion may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the government body, and also to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation, the dangerous dog decision appeal.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to enter executive session, and we will adjourn from executive session without conducting any additional business in our open meetings. I'll hold the board. Ellen?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you.